County Canvassing Board Meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at two oh four P. M. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Camila Bustamante.
Present.
Commissioner Anna Hansen.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Anna Hamilton.
Here.
And Chair Hank Hughes, you have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Okay, approval of the Canvassing Board's special meeting, no, approval of agenda. Manager Schaefer, are there any changes to the agenda?
None from my side of the room, Mr. Chair, but I would defer to Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, any changes?
No changes from us, other than we have a presentation, and I just want to make sure we didn't, I didn't, I don't see the word "presentation," but we will be including a presentation as part of, part E.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
Wow, simultaneous seconds. Approval, motion by Commissioner Hansen, seconded by Commissioner Green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approval of the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Canvassing Board Special Meeting Minutes. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hansen, seconded by Commissioner Hamilton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. Now we go on to item E, and it begins with your presentation, I assume, county clerk.
Yes, will you, um, the presentation? Okay. We're waiting for, waiting for technical assistance.
It's a traditional waiting period before each presentation.
election. We wanted to talk a little bit about our election before we got through the results. Um, I did want to introduce some folks, so our entire warehouse team is here. They were our team that supported the election at all the polling sites, um, and made sure that all of our sites were up and running and technical issues, so. They work, they work very hard to support us, uh, who are sort of at home base, working on, uh, sort of chats, and they, we dispatched them out to all the sites, and they make sure the sites run smoothly. They set them all up, they break them all down, uh, rain or shine, snow. Um, we make sure that the election gets done, and we could not do it without their help, so, uh, I wanted to make sure we recognize those folks. I feel like I'm clicking. Point this way? Oh, too much, too much, this is very delicate. Okay. Um, okay, so we actually had, um, nearly seventy-four percent turnout. These numbers were before we updated our twelve hundred or thirteen hundred or so hand tallies. So one of the things we've been working on, and why we can't go, uh, on Tuesday, is because, um, we had so many overseas and military ballots, about three to four times the normal amount, um, and we had to hand tally all of those ballots, so we have been working very hard. I think I was up till two in the morning last night, making sure that we had entered those ballots correctly, because we have to hand tally them. So we actually were able to reach seventy-four point oh four percent once we updated our, um, hand tallies, and those, those will be on these results, but this is what the numbers they, that my staff had at about one o'clock before we did our one thirty push. So overall, um, this election had a sixty-six, sixty-seven percent turnout, and of course, Santa Fe County, as usual, did very well, um, compared to the other large counties. I think Harding with five hundred votes and Los Alamos, uh, beat us this time, but we were well ahead and well ahead of the pace of the other large counties. Um, we are doing, um, very strong early voting, so one of the things that we really pushed with our promotion money is voting early, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, but you can see that fifty-two thousand people cast their ballot early, um, on, uh, in this election, and another almost fourteen thousand people voted by absentee, which meant that there was actually lower election day turnout, not as low as, um, two thousand and twenty, where that was a very unusual election with a lot of absentee ballots, but given a normal, um, turnout of other counties in comparison, we actually banked all of our votes very early, saving us from a lot of technical issues, which we'll talk about later, um, this election. So, um, we, you know, this was a really large operation, we had thirty-five internal temps, um, to help us with all of the processing of registrations, especially same-day registrations. We were absolutely slammed on Election Day, so we knew we would have to be ready, all the internal processes of training all the poll workers, we hired two additional staff to help with all the trainings. Um, we are very grateful for the fire department to allow us to use the fire station near our new elections warehouse, because that's a really nice training center, and then it kind of frees up our older warehouse, where we had to do all the staging of all the election equipment, put all the supplies together, um, do all the, um, sort of launching of all of our stuff out to the polling sites, so it really was very helpful to have that site again. Um, same-day registration, we processed, uh, thirty-four hundred total registrations during this election. Um, on Election Day, um, nearly one in eleven of our, um, voters voted by same-day registration. So that meant that, uh, maybe, um, nearly one in ten people, when they came into the polling site, were intending to use same-day registration. At the fairgrounds, where we have fourteen ballot-on-demand systems, they were all humming, because one in six of our voters uses same-day, um, uses fairgrounds to vote, and so that's a site that has to have a lot of capacity when we get slammed, um, in that afternoon rush, um, you know, when people are taking their leave from work to go vote, we get a huge amount of people, and actually, the lines this year were not from the ballot-on-demands, we were able to quite, you know, just keep pace with, um, our voters. It was same-day registration. I think we had three same-day registrations operating on Election Day, and we still had a line of, um, at sometimes over an hour, waiting for that data to go up into the cloud and come back down due to technical issues with the Secretary of State's office. Um, we also had a hundred and twenty-seven absentee ballots rejected, um, and we have been working in the last two weeks to cure those ballots. We sent everyone a mailed notice, we called everyone whose number we had, we emailed everyone whose email we had, and we actually went down to Edgewood and up to Espanola and knocked on doors to get those ballots cured, and left those notices on people's doors to try to ensure that they would cure their ballots. Um, it's a little easier this election, because a lot of the curing happened through an online portal, but, uh, some people are still traditional and want us, uh, want to send us their, um, cure forms, so if you are listening and you have a ballot that's still out and needs to be cured, you have until the twenty-second, and we would love to countervote. We like to see that number get down to zero, in terms of ballots that need to be cured. So we sent out, uh, fourteen thousand, nearly fifteen thousand absentee ballots, and we received, uh, thirteen thousand four hundred and eleven back. Some people did decide to cancel their ballots and go vote in person, so we only have about four hundred and twenty ballots left out, and our plan is next week to call all of them and ask them why they didn't vote, because we want to track, um, postal service issues. We did see, you know, ballots from other jurisdictions come to our office, we did see, um, other offices in other states getting our ballots, and then we, we getting those ballots too late to count, when those offices sent them and forwarded them on to us. So the postal service this year definitely had some challenges in terms of making sure that the right jurisdiction got the mail they were supposed to get. Um, but overall, ninety-one percent we got back, which we think is pretty good, and the fact that we had over ten thousand ballots out meant that we could start two weeks early for our tabulation, and we were able to test and demo and get our new Bluecrest machine down to a very smooth process, so, um, I think absentee board, once the machine really got going and we fixed out all the bugs and, you know, re-engineered some of our, um, procedures, they really, you know, in future elections, will probably only have to meet two or three days to process all, um, fifteen to twenty thousand ballots that we're hoping to expand our absentee ballot universe to. Um, first-time voters, so voters with original registration more recent than two thousand and twenty-four primary, uh, was thirty-nine hundred people. So people really, um, you know, either have moved here, or they've moved here in the last four years and then decided, because this is a primary, uh, a general election, a presidential, then it was really important that their vote count, and so they voted. So some of the things that we introduced this election, um, is this, so we noticed there was a pretty, not nice tone at the national level, uh, around this election, and we wanted to remind people that, uh, voting is a community effort, uh, voting supports your community, voting is how you make sure your voice is heard, and everyone's vote counts, and so we wanted to, um, highlight the fact that voting is a community process. And so we introduced some ideas to try to, one, encourage early voting, right, because it's really important for us to have people early vote, because that means that we have less operational challenges on Election Day and can handle technical issues if something were to go wrong, as it did on Election Day. Um, we can talk about that in a bit, but, um, one of the things that we did is promoted, uh, pause at the polls, so essentially, we worked with Espanola Humane, and they had adoption events in our, some of our sites that are not as heavily used, to be able to promote voting at those sites. Um, it was a really nice cross-promotional idea, and, um, it got a lot of, uh, earned media, so we were able to get out that idea about Santa Fe County, the community, and also vote, um, early voting. Um, we also had a kids' vote initiative, so we actually had an ice cream tabulator at our clerk's office during early voting hours, as well as Nancy Rodriguez, and, um, kids who were coming with their families could actually use that tabulator and cast a ballot, and then we were able to show them how the tabulator worked, right? A certified tabulator for, uh, an election with live ballots, right, is not something people can inspect, but because we were using an ice cream tabulator, it was really, it was a way to demonstrate to students how that worked. Carlos Gilbert actually brought four classes over down the block to come and cast their ballots at our office as a little field trip. So we had over five hundred students, um, complete a mock ballot and learn about voting, and how we reconcile, and show the zero tapes, and, you know, how to cast your ballots, so that they understand how easy it is to vote in Santa Fe County, and we're hoping then, and then they got, of course, a student-designed sticker, so that sort of created a situation in which, you know, they, they knew it would be easy to vote, and so when they feel like voting as an adult, we're hoping that they'll, they'll make it a lifetime habit. We know that when people start voting early, they become, they're much more likely, likely to become lifetime voters. Um, so we also had new signage at every polling site, we had a kids' vote, uh, step and repeat, so keep people could take selfies in front of the step and repeat, we're hoping to sort of discourage people from taking selfies inside the polling site to help protect voter privacy. Um, we did a very extensive G O T V campaign, so we were hoping to get people to vote early. So we did radio, we did newspaper, we did some television, um, targeted to people that we thought might not necessarily be early voters, and tried to get that, get that idea that, you know, bank your vote now, um, save your place in line for someone who can only vote Election Day, and that really seemed to have a strong response, we saw a lot of pretty good clicks, um, and we know that people, we really got the, the word out that we wanted you to vote early this election, and we wanted you to drop your ballot, not mail it, because we were very concerned about some of the issues that we'd heard about in the primary from other states, we were concerned that there would be mail delays, and so we wanted people to drop their ballots, not mail it. Um, this year, the Secretary of State introduced Ballot Scout, which is an electronic tracking and curing portal, um, so that voters who were not sure if their ballot counted could check that, um, uh, check that online portal and then cure their ballot if they couldn't, if their ballot was listed as rejected. Um, we had a huge number of federally qualified electors, again, twelve hundred and fourteen, uh, where you ocava overseas ballots, which is about three to four times our normal response. Um, so it was a huge interest election, and that was nice for us, because it bumped us up another, uh, percentage point for turnout. Um, we did a lot of senior outreach this election, trying to get people to register for the permanent absentee list. You know, we have changed a lot in the last year and a half, so that means that people cannot request a ballot, uh, two weeks from the election, starting two weeks from the election, and a lot of people have not heard about that deadline, so we get a lot of calls the last week of early voting, asking for an absentee ballot, and we have to tell them, you can't have an absentee ballot, the deadline has passed. So we proactively went out to our senior centers, getting people that information that they have to sign up for permanent absentee, they have to sign up for a ballot early, or else we cannot send you one. Um, we also did early voting postcards to alert voters to the fact that sites had changed. So, um, we did Santa Fe Community College, we did Edgewood Fire Station, we did Nancy Rodriguez Community Center, to let people know they could vote early in Nancy Rodriguez, to try to increase interest in that area. Um, and actually, Pawoka Satellite, uh, was supposed to be Pawokee Middle School, because we had moved El Rancho, so we sent a postcard to every single registered voter in that precinct. Um, we also did some traffic control around fairgrounds in Edgewood, because we always hear about, um, you know, shoving matches and kind of people not getting along at the fairgrounds in particular, because they're all trying to crush into one area to vote. Um, the light that happens to be at fairgrounds and rodeo, uh, doesn't change rather quickly, and so there's always a backup in traffic. Um, we increased our security, so because we have a new site at, uh, Dinosaur Trail, um, and because we actually had an incident with a messenger, we actually, um, increased our security in this office, uh, to make sure that we had escorts, uh, and had much more security presence, not at the polling sites themselves, because we want to make sure voters don't feel intimidated, but around our sites, um, and around our, um, operational locations, because we did actually have to have, you know, file a sheriff's report and a police report around an incident, so, um, there is, was much more heightened awareness around this election, and of course, much more heightened security. Um, we, as you saw, we did our ribbon cutting with our Bluecrest machine, so we are happy to report, it worked really, really well, and so we're gonna be able to use that for future elections. Okay, so here's a little bit about our kids' vote initiative, right? There are very, you know, controversial topics, like your favorite ice cream flavor and your favorite search engine, um, kids really liked it, you know, they got a piece of candy, if they were allowed to have candy, and, uh, an I-voted sticker. Um, we had this very extensive early voting strategy, we knew that Election Day, because of same-day registration, would be tricky, um, particularly since the people who tend to wait last minute are the people who also have not updated their voter registration, right? So we knew that that was coming, that wave of people, a crush of people needing same-day registration, who would have tricky challenges around their registration, uh, particularly, you know, like address issues, things like that, so we wanted to get ahead of it by pushing early voting. Um, so you can see some of our data from our social media and other display ads, and we would think that that campaign is very successful, because if you look at the proportion of voting in other counties, we actually were well in advance, um, in Santa Fe County, and you can see that, you know, when it comes to the number of provisionals we had because of the same-day, um, crashing, we actually had very few provisionals, because we didn't, you know, we were able to reduce the number of people clogging up the same-day registration lines by, by pushing people to vote early. Okay, so we did a lot of earned media, um, pause at the polls, we did, uh, you know, the new citizens came and voted early, and the Albuquerque Journal did a, and a highlight on that, and there was a lot of interest in kids' vote, um, particularly around Santa Fe parents, I know that it went out to a lot of the Santa Fe parenting groups, and so we saw people specifically come to the clerk's office to take their kids to vote, so that was really positive, and I think a really great learning experience, and also we're hoping those kids will become future voters. Um, and we, of course, these are award-winning stickers that were featured at all of our polling sites, um, and some of the reminder of all the great things we've been doing in Santa Fe County and winning, um, national recognition, and actually, so much so that on Election Day, uh, Tom Hicks, who is the Election Assistance Commissioner, was here in town and touring sites with me, um, and actually, he got to meet one of our poll workers and present her, uh, with Lieutenant Governor's Office and the Legislature, with Representative Tara Luhon, Lynn Miller, who, um, is going to be sadly retiring after forty-six years. Um, Tom was very, uh, grateful to be able to help present those certificates to Lynn. Uh, we're very grateful for her service, you know, forty-six years is quite an accomplishment, and we're very sad that she will no longer be serving as our most, I think, long-serving poll worker, so, um, you know, thank you very much, Lynn. Okay, just some more of the same. So I did want to talk a little bit about our challenges. Um, we, um, what is this, tampered absentee drop boxes? Oh, yes, okay. So there was a gentleman who decided he didn't like the drop boxes and decided to put random things in the drop boxes, so we had to, uh, alert the sheriff, and as it turns out, because he wasn't actually damaging the ballots inside, even though he was putting trash and other things in the box, um, you know, it's clear that we will have to, uh, perhaps strengthen the laws around tampering with ballot boxes. Um, we had a lot of construction that we had to work around, um, our HVAC shut down, and so there was a little bit of panic, but we're grateful to Public Works and Elias, um, for helping us get that back up and running. I think it happened, what, like Friday before Election Day, so there was a lot of concern that it would get too cold, uh, for the voting machines to run. Um, you know, of course, with the schools, we always have these challenges of, they're having dances, they're having, uh, events, they're having basketball games, and so we have to set up sites either really early in the morning or break them down right after voting, because, um, they're just, you know, they're only willing to give us like an hour on either side of the, of the voting process. Um, so we had quite, uh, a lot of work from our messengers and long days trying to make sure we fit those windows. Um, of course, I always joke, in Santa Fe County, whenever I set out my signs, that's the day that the temperature's gonna change, so we'll have beautiful fall weather, and then as soon as I put out my signs for Election Day, um, there's a snowstorm. So, um, and the same thing in the primary, right? That's when we know this, the, the wind is gonna come and break all of our signs, so we, we always repeatedly, whenever we have signage, we put it out, and then about twelve hours later, they've all been broken by the wind in Santa Fe County. Um, and then, uh, we also had a COVID outbreak, I got COVID, and I still had to put on a mask and keep going to make sure, uh, all of our hand tallies were counted, so, I think it took out like at least two versions of our, um, hand tally board, so, you know, we had quite our challenges this election, um, and we're also having some serious tabulator end-of-life issues, and that's something we may want to talk to our board about, is that, uh, the Secretary of State's about two years overdue for replacing the tabulators. Uh, there is some discussion about what we do now that we have, you know, uh, there's a new type of tabulator that has been approved, but we're sort of stuck in this middle period where we're seeing tabulators, um, essentially grind to a halt, where the gears no longer work, and we're having to replace so many, um, it might be time to just get new ones instead of trying to duct tape and, uh, fix some of the old tabulators, you know, getting them to limp along. So, um, you know, as a county, we may have to ask for another, uh, group of tabulators and pay for them ourselves, as required by statute. Um, and then also, we had to convert to security escorts at night, uh, because of an incident with a messenger, of, um, a person, uh, decided to try and attempt to pull over one of our messengers, uh, said that her light was out, um, and it wasn't out, um, because she was in a county vehicle, and she really got followed by that person, and so, um, we are, uh, during this election, we really, um, increased security around our staff, um, because of that incident. Okay, so more, oh my goodness, there's like a thousand award-winning programming with slides. Um, so here's a picture with Lynn, um, where we were giving her a word from the Lieutenant Governor, um, who you might know is also, was a county clerk at one time, uh, and our, uh, Legislature, so, um, and this is, I think, our poll worker's oath of office? Yeah, so. Um, and here's some kids' vote, and here's us canvassing, and here's us cutting the ribbon, and basically, it was like hundreds of people who, who made this election happen. They're very proud of pause at the polls, apparently, in my office. Um, and I just want to make sure that we thank all of our I T department, and we had this project where we needed to have some kind of computer or device, um, we no longer have, uh, what's called an absentee roster, uh, physically and paper anymore, even though the statute still says to have that, and so we had to figure out a technological way of meeting that statutory requirement, where we can provide a roster to our, um, challengers from every party, but the roster would have been like thousands of pages if we were to do it the old-school way, because we no longer do precinct voting, so they would have had to have every single person registered, uh, printed freshly every day at every site, uh, but given all the same-day registration we were having, so I T helped us come up with a, a solution. Our first solution was from Robus, we did a pilot, and essentially, that pilot was that real-time, um, so as voters check into a site, they would get real, they would look on a laptop, it would be secure off the network, it would be totally locked down, but each party would have their own laptop, and then they could see the voters checking in real-time. One of the things that they complain about, um, at the polling sites, is when we have these very large polling sites, like fairgrounds, which is very popular, and there's just no way we're gonna get voters, not gonna convince voters not to go there, right? One in six of our voters go there, and they're determined to go to that site. Um, is that with a fourteen, eleven to fourteen ballot-on-demand systems, you can't hear eleven to fourteen people checking in at the same time, and they're supposed to be able to hear that, it just becomes a cacophony. So essentially, the Robus solution is an, is an elegant one, in that they can see the voters checking in real-time, they can't see anything about the voter, other than the things they're allowed to see on the roster, but it is the way we're solving, that they wouldn't necessarily see fourteen people checking in at once and having to check it off and slow down the voting process, but they can see those voters checking in and see that they're registered voters. Um, the I T was helping us with our sort of secondary and cheaper solution, which is, uh, launching laptops, uh, and Chromebooks throughout all of our, um, sites with three each, for each of the three major parties who were gonna be challengers, and essentially, um, they would have, uh, an Excel or PDF of the roster of that morning on the list, so that they could check against the, um, the voters who were checking in. Um, this is something we're hoping the Robus solution, because it's elegant, could probably launch, uh, for future elections, but, um, I T really struggled, I mean, worked with us to try to get this solution to work, um, and so I think they were putting laptops and things together, uh, at the last minute, probably like eight P. M. before Election Day, and so we really wanted to give a shout-out to, um, Matt Hyde and Daniel Frescaz in particular, and Dale, who, um, worked pretty hard to get this across the finish line. Um, we had a lot of people in Public Works helping us with all of our HVAC issues, and all the various things that go wrong with our polling sites, it's almost like our community centers know that it's election season and it's time to, uh, for the HVAC systems to start failing. Um, we had a lot of help from our emergency management, they actually came up with an emergency management plan and met with us, and, um, sort of identified resources that we could use should a polling site go down, things like, um, Starlink systems or, uh, generators, right? Um, but we do, we do, we have identified that we need more large-capacity generators to be able to support our office, should, uh, the power go out on Election Day. We are very lucky that we didn't have the snowstorm that happened on Thursday after election, happened on Tuesday, or we would have, be having a very different discussion about the challenges of Election Day. Um, and I do want to address, um, same-day registration. Same-day registration, uh, was supposed to, you know, be a smooth, smooth process, and it did work very well during the early voting period, um, we hire extra people to work in our office to ensure that registrations are processed timely. Um, and, uh, on Election Day, at about eight o'clock, once the polls opened at seven, we started noticing significant slowdowns with service, which is our voter registration file. Um, actually, the system went down briefly, and then they actually had to shut it down from nine fifteen to nine thirty to sort of allocate more resources to it, so we had to tell everyone in line to wait. And then, um, as we were going through the day, we were noticing more and more data lag, so in our office, even though the poll worker was, uh, the poll worker was tech, uh, chatting with us, telling us that a same-day registration had been, uh, submitted, and we processed that, the ones that are easy to process, right, there are slight changes in registration, and sent them back, it would take sometimes up to an hour and a half to two hours for that data to appear at the polling site. Uh, so at about five o'clock, when we were having that after-work rush, everything just kind of slowed down to a crawl, we were not getting same-day registrations out of the cloud at our polling sites, and so the same, um, the Secretary of State gave us the directive to start handing out provisional ballots. Some voters don't want to vote provisionally, they get upset by that, and they waited. Um, other people, because what it is, is that we have to, if they're a new voter, they have to call our office, and we have to figure out in the voter file which precinct part we're supposed to assign, so it's no faster than same-day registration. So there were some voters who were voting, um, after nine o'clock, but very few, less than ten, so, you know, some of the sites, for whatever reason, just that there was a data, um, slowdown from our ballot-on-demand up to the cloud and back down, even though we had processed their registrations two hours previous, they still had to wait for their same-day registrations to come down, and they did not want to be issued a provisional ballot, so, you know, and some people just ended up unfortunately leaving, because they didn't want to wait for a provisional, and they didn't want to wait for same-day, so, you know, unfortunately, the voters who come the last two hours of voting are often the voters who have other, um, like, documentation issues, or we have to tell them to go find other documentation, um, issues like they, the, we and the county have changed their address, but they still have their old M V D address and are trying to register under address that no longer exists. So I think near the end of the day, I think one in three of our same-day registrations required extensive research, address research, to figure out where those voters were living and, and. figure out where those voters were living and challenges. So, you know, we were very lucky that our normal voter load was actually pretty okay and moderate on Election Day, so we could quickly process those voters through, and then work on those same-day registration challenges. Do you know, to give some comparison, I think 490 provisionals were issued in Sandoval, and I think over 800 were issued in Doñana County. So, and I think over 1,000 were issued in Bernalillo County. So because we were not seeing such a high volume as much, we had turnout, but not as high turnout on Election Day, and we also had, you know, prepared in case, you know, I think I told Ms. Angela, my nightmare scenario is same-day will go down, and we'll have to be running provisional SDR envelopes to every voter, so please make sure we have enough, is that, you know, we sort of had the doomsday scenario pre-planned for, and like I wish we, you know, hadn't seen these same-day registration challenges, but I think overall, Santa Fe County worked pretty well to work out the kinks, you know, telling voters, hey, this site seemed to be processing faster. For instance, at Fairgrounds, there was like an hour line, so we told people to go to Shopperall, you know, things like that. We're trying to work with voters to make sure that they got a chance to vote. So, you know, only 200 people voted after 7:00, which is pretty good, given the challenges we were seeing technically. So, you know, I think we, overall, we did a really good job of managing the challenges we were seeing on Election Day. Any questions?
Just real quick, do you see anything that the Secretary of State can improve so that the same-day registration goes smoother next time?
Well, I think right now, the clerks, some of the clerks are very raw, you know, and want to get rid of same-day registration on Election Day, because, you know, you might know the history is that this legislation passed, and folks were very concerned about it being on Election Day. And so it actually, for the first time through the Voting Systems Change Committee, several of the clerks voted no to make it available on Election Day. And then, of course, those clerks were promptly ushered off the Voting Systems Change Committee so that same-day registration, because it's seen as, it's seen as an access issue. The problem is, is that the load testing is occurring on Election Day. So if you know there's going to be a high turnout election, and you know voters who tend to vote same-day registration, or also the voters who leave things to the last minute, then you have a very high rate of same-day registrations on Election Day that are not smooth sailing kind of registrations, you know, voters who don't have the right kind of documentation, and you have to send that back and say, you need to leave and find some other thing that's going to count as documentation. You know, voters who don't actually know where they live seems to be, or, you know, people start getting tired at the end of the day, and then there's data entry issues. So, you know, I have a long list of things that I don't want to get rid of same-day registration on Election Day, but I certainly have some ideas. One is that we should probably allow people to register online up until the Monday before Election Day, so that we can just pull those online registrations. If those voters show up to the polling sites, just pull them down out of the cloud and process them that way. The other thing is that when you are registering same-day registration, there's no, the screens are really tiny, and some, and as you might know, our voters tend to be older and have trouble seeing the tiny writing, and so there's a lot of mistyping. So we would like to do, you know, just like when you send yourself fancy shoes, like I like to do, you know, it tells you what your suggested address should be, and that would be a way of helping with the data errors. And also, we really need to be doing better voter education. We are going to have automatic voter registration coming through, and we're going to have to see if that wave of registrations coming through motor vehicles will help or hurt same-day registration numbers, because a lot of people get pushed to automatically register to vote who actually don't want to register. So we've seen in Santa Fe County, where people are registering like their vote in Taos County, and they get pushed to Taos County when they actually intended to stay registered in Santa Fe County the whole time. So these issues will probably continue. Quite frankly, service, which is the voter registration database, it's pretty clunky. It's been about 10 years, I think, right? Eight years, it's time for an update. Probably needs about $25 to $30 million from the Legislature to do a two-to-five-year plan on how to move our data to more modern system. And, you know, I think the clerks are feeling that it's aging as well for all of the challenges that we have to do. So, you know, there needs to be some infrastructure investments at the Secretary of State's office, including better server, more IT people, things like that, and there needs to be investment from the Legislature on the data processes that are supporting elections, given that they are wanting so much data to be traveling around on Election Day and for the election process. So those would be some of my recommendations, but since I am not in charge, I can only make recommendations, you know, that is something that we can advocate for at the Legislature.
Thank you. It sounds like you have several good ideas, and hopefully they'll implement some of them and go smoother next time. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all of the election workers who are in the audience for your service. I'm grateful, because it's a trying job, so I'm grateful to all of you. So elections are a county-wide effort. So as you've heard me say before, I like the county logo on our clerk, our assessor, anything that you show. So, you know, I know you're showing this to us, but, you know, somebody else could see it, and it doesn't have our logo on it. And I have requested that numerous times, and even though I will be leaving, I'm not going to give up on what I think is important, because you are part of the county, and all of our county services have helped you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Madam Clerk. I took the time to be, as I mentioned, one of the first voters at the ballots, and that was a great honor, but also got me to see that, you know, the preparation that had gone into being ready at the time. And thank you, thank you to all the folks here, great job. Just to answer, or to, we received an email from a constituent who has asked about the potential of some changed rules or an adoption of rules changed in mid-election cycle. And we just want to verify that whether things were changed or whether they weren't, and if you could clarify on that.
To our knowledge, in our directives from the Secretary of State, we did not see any changes, but we do point to the Secretary of State's website, because we want to not be out of sync with what they are directing to voters. So, you know, if there was a change in the website, that's something to discuss with the Secretary of State's office.
Okay, and so my understanding is it was an issue of the new adoption of a new law, state statute, and that should have been in place before, before the election, and they were concerned that this was adopted somewhere midstream.
Well, I think at election school, it was discussed, which happens before the election. So I think that, you know, if the website wasn't updated, that was probably separate from the directives that we were getting from SOS.
So midstream through, or during the election, you did not change your rules for same-day registration, which my understanding is, is it was basically an update in the documentation that you needed to prove your identity and address and so on. You did not change the rules midstream.
We did not change, we did not change the rules. We take our directives from the SOS, because, you know, when they are promulgating these rules and procedures, this was actually their law change that they pushed forward in 2024, I guess it was, in the legislative session.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Bustamante?
Hi, Madam Chair, Chair Clerk. Thank you, and thanks to your entire team. It is a tireless job. It requires integrity, and I am grateful for the effort that you all put this year. I know that these, the days of elections have gotten a little bit more intense, given a lot more scrutiny on the process, and I'm grateful for all of your work. So please allow me to just thank you all personally. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I thank you also for the hard work all of you put in. It was a great election for Santa Fe County.
I have one question on.
Oh, Commissioner Hanson has a question. Go ahead.
On the last page, the Cundio Soil and Water Conservation District, is that multi-county?
Multi-county, yeah.
Okay, so we had three votes.
It's like we have almost three eligible voters, so it may be 100% turnout for that, for that district.
Okay. So do we need a motion?
I think, do you want to present the election results?
Sure.
For us to vote on?
So we, as I said, we drowned in hand tallies, and so we actually worked with Robis to develop a new product that will take a team, bipartisan team, they'll enter, and then a second team does a second entry, and we make sure that the entry matches. So all the tallies in our office are accurate. We, of course, you know, I don't know if you want to answer any questions about this, but this is our overall vote count of our presidential election, our congressional, all the way down to our CUAD Soil and Water District. I, I think that, you know, we had very strong turnout and very strong interest, because this is a presidential election, and, you know, it's very hard to compare it to the 2020 election, because 2020 was such an unusual election, with such a high rate of absentee. So, you know, I think generalizations made between the two elections is hard, but we are sort of, we are showing high turnout, and we reached that 74.04, I think, percent once we accounted for our provisionals and hand tally. And I think you can see that our provisionals are actually not that much, it's 24 from Election Day. So, you know, we were able to, either people submitted an SDR, and then we just filled out a provisional ballot, or we were able to figure out that they already were registered to vote in Santa Fe County, and we were able to follow up, and we had some hearings on Wednesday. So if people needed to justify getting a provisional ballot, we were able to justify having these votes count.
Okay, any questions? Pleasure to the board.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
I request approval of the November 5, 2024, General Election Report of the Canvas pursuant to MN SA 1978, Section 1-13-13, parentheses A.
Second.
Okay, Commission, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Hamilton? No, Bustamante. Commissioner Bustamante, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Well, I had one little last slide.
Passed unanimously. And you have one last slide.
Yeah.
What you got? You got your candidacy passed.
Good thing.
So I just wanted to thank you for the certifying election, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the next six months when we don't have an election. We're going to be re-presincting based on the 2024 numbers, so we'll be looking at how voters voted and doing our consolidation or splitting based on the turnout, and we'll be voting on that in July. We're going to be working on our permanent absentee strategy. Our goal is to get above 10,000 folks who are on our permanent absentee list. That helps take off the pressure of our downtown office, as well as Fairgrounds, when people vote by absentee. We're looking at where our drop boxes are, and going to try to move them based on, you know, interest and demand, and also enhance them to more robust boxes. We're planning on finishing our reorganization. We're going to be working on NVRA cancellation, and what that is, is in the spring of the odd-numbered year, we actually look at all the voters who got an undeliverable piece of mail and have not voted in two elections, and then the precinct board actually meets, and they will cancel registrations of folks who probably are not here anymore. Because we have same-day registration, it's not as, you know, concerning for us to be canceling registrations, because those voters are likely not here anymore, and if they are, they can just do same-day registration and vote again. And we will also be doing an audit of all 114,000 registered voters in our county, making sure that we have a physical card for the online registration that we have. Of course, there's the 60-day session coming up where we discuss some of those legislative changes we'd like to see, and we wanted to remind you that the constitutional amendment passed that would allow you to increase county official salaries. So, all that said, I wanted to thank you all for supporting the election process, and it's a privilege to serve as your clerk. And I wanted to click to the final, the final slide, where it says Santa Fe County on it. Yay! So thank you.
Thank you. And we are taking County Constitutional Amendment Number Four seriously. And now, your final business announcements, anybody announcements?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Hamilton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.